A commission work session. We have a fairly short agenda today. But is there a motion to accept the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any questions or comments?
I think it's a great agenda and it would be great if we got out in an hour today.
Very good comment. Thank you for that. There are no other comments. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of accepting today's approving today's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Hearing none, the motion carries. And I think we're just going to hand it right over to Executive Director Smith.
Thank you, Commission President Iyal. So this is the first of what will be a pattern in the future, agenda setting meetings by the entire commission. And what we thought we would do today is try to just do two things, go over what's on the schedule for upcoming commission meetings through October. Quickly highlight what it is and answer questions and/or messages that you want us to see. And then for a while now, we've had a list of future meeting topics. And so I have the second sheet you have is I took those and sort of segregated them into what is not very discretionary. Because it's got timing associated with it that we will just bring to you. Timing that is more discretionary, I would like to ask your thoughts on the cadence of any updates in there. For and then when one of those meetings will be. There are items for that we would schedule separately and those are mostly joint meetings with other jurisdictions. And wanted to get your thoughts on if you have a priority ranking of those or when you want those scheduled. And then just wanted to ask if there are any other priorities or work session topics you all want to identify. So we'll kick it off by, I have, so you don't have to listen to me the entire time, I will ask Camille to go over what's on the commission calendar for now through October.
All right. Thank you very much, Executive Director Smith. All right, so you have the meeting schedule in front of you and beginning with this meeting today. You'll see it's in other business as a work session. But calling your attention to July 22nd, that meeting is at a special time, it's at 10:00 a.m. So that our commissioners can attend a WPPA port commissioner offsite conference. We have at the top, you'll see it's labeled briefing and essentially that's just an information only. We're not coming back for any topics or an ask at the other port in another time. It's just essentially an update or a briefing for you. And so we're going to bring to you the anatomy of the port budget. And that is so that when you get to budgeting season beginning on August 5th, that you'll feel like you know the components of it. Our action agenda items for that evening are the PMA for the Department of Natural Resources, Bud Inlet Remediation and Port Peninsula Master Plan Contract, which we previously briefed you on in the Comprehensive Scheme of Harbor Improvement. The advisory section is, that are topics that we bring to you that we intend to come back with future, with an ask in the future. And that will be for the ground lease of the fifth amendment for Panatoni waterfront architectural contract. And then update on subcommittees and operating rules and resolution for POCCAC.
Questions, changes? What?
All right. On August 5th, we have a budget retreat planned where this is where the commission will provide guidance and discussion around the 2025 budget. And that, those conversations will help inform the drafts that come after that, the drafts of the port budget.
And we'll, sorry, we'll craft an agenda for that and circulate it to you all just to make sure it's covering topics you think we should be discussing and get your input.
In August, we have one meeting traditionally and we published that at the beginning of the year. So August 12th is the one meeting. And when you see, when you see, it felt like at the top of this agenda, you'll see there's two, it's either action or consent agenda. That means that we haven't determined if it's coming back for action and we're going to ask for input on whether it comes forward for one of those two actions, either as consent. But that will be to codify any subcommittees formed and any updates to the resolution for POCCAC. And then we'll be joined by the Timberland Regional Library. They have a wonderful workforce development program and program updates. And they asked to come before this commission as they hadn't been to visit us in a number of years and felt like there's a lot of updates that they could share that they thought would be helpful in our work. And we heard from commissioners that a regular update from POCCAC members would be helpful. If not monthly, we've put them on there monthly for now and that's up for your decision if you'd like to see that going forward.
So, sorry, can you clarify what that means, what's going to happen on a monthly basis?
A member of the POCCAC would come to the commission and provide an update on any progress that they're making as a, as an advisory committee body.
I would say that monthly seems like a lot for that, but I don't know what other commissioners think.
I would like it at a monthly cadence.
Or as needed.
Yeah, or if they have, what if they are still working on these? Or quarterly or, I don't know, monthly, we don't have standing monthly reports from any of our other business lines. Or monthly just seems disproportionate.
I think the, I think the POCCAC would like to have it monthly and I, I mean, I would be, I would be okay with starting out at monthly and if, you know, if that seems to be too much or if they just run out of things to tell us, we could.
All right. And that's originally how this came up was during the POCCAC meeting, they asked for this.
Got it.
And it's conceived as a 10-minute segment of the calendar, not like a 30-minute.
This next topic is Bud Inlet Update. And I, Executive Director Smith has that flagged on for cadence going forward as well. In terms of how frequently you want updates.
What is the cadence that you're recommending? Um, I, I was thinking either one where there are things to report, since we get the results from sampling or quarterly, just because sometimes there's just not a lot of activity.
I'm finding that the Bud Bay updates are not on what would help me kind of continue moving forward with it. So for example, what I'd love you to give us a director's update next on funding strategies for the Bud Bay remediation work and kind of where we're headed with that. The sort of conversations you're having. So I think if we could have specific topics. I'm all for keeping that cadence, but then informing it with specific topics.
And how will those specific topics be determined?
In the agenda setting meeting.
And so the commission as a body will determine what we would like to hear from the executive director in those meetings?
Or from the technical team?
Well, presumably when she has something to put into the update or staff have something to recommend, they'll bring it up. But I would like us to also be able to inform topics that.
And I, so let's, I'll just make sure to ask you all, because I think our default will be sort of what is happening just on the ground in terms of the project. So are we, did we get the permits for the space sampling, you know, what the schedule is for that, that kind of thing? So I think to you all.
I guess my, my comment is just coming from, and it's, if we're all on the same page as using the agenda setting meeting, that just, there's predictability as to what's being requested of the staff. And so that that isn't changing all the time. But it, it sounds like that's what we're all saying as far as using the agenda setting meeting to do that. I just don't want to keep moving the ball on the staff. That's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm concerned about is that. So, but if everyone's comfortable that that's.
Commissioner Harding, in this particular instance, I can tell you that staff, they, even though it's not, it's not on this particular air, on this agenda item there. They're planning to give you an update on the, what the sampling is complete and when they expect to have results coming out and how they'll share those, their plan to share those with the public. And so that's, so they're wanting to give you a preview of how that's going to roll out. They probably have, I can think of four, four other topics that they'll want to keep you apprised of going forward. Won't necessarily be monthly, but I know that they'll have some topics. Great example is Executive Director Smith is working with them on the funding strategy. Then they'll have the report of the actual contamination report of the East Bay that they'll want to share with you as well.
I would also encourage you to bring in consultants. So for example, if we're talking about our strategy for sediment sampling, that we have people who are able to give a, we're able to speak to the technical issues.
Just in the reports, I mean, in the, in these updates?
Yeah, I think it, it adds to the credibility of the update. Or at least I trust the director's judgment of whether it will or not. And if it won't, we should talk about the people. I think it will.
Okay.
Okay, so continue on with August 12th. So there's a potential action on a contract approval for the waterfront center for the architectural contract. And that's stemmed on the Friday 3 from July 22nd.
I raise a concern on that contract that I hope would be addressed. Commissioner Harding and I recently discussed this. We had talked about during last time this came before us. I think Commissioner Iyal, you had also noted that there was potentially a portion of the work that would be like a business feasibility type plan. And will that be presented to us before you're asking us to approve the contract, this contract, or is it what the contract itself would fund?
The contract would fund it. So that's the very first phase of the project. And what we plan to share with you is the various phases of the project that totals, the total contract amount. And each of the, after each of the phases, the port could, could terminate the project if it, if it's not canceling out or if, if for whatever reason, it doesn't look like it's going to be a good investment. But that would be the first phase is the essentially feasibility business case.
So this is, we had had a briefing for an RFP, I mean, you had done an RFP, you had a briefing about the putative successful bidder. And then since then, you've been in scope negotiations and this is the actual proposed contract. And will you be providing the commission the actual contract then this week to review post-contract?
I don't know if we have the contract.
We will have the scope of work that will inform the contract.
And that will be in the meeting packet.
Yep.
That was the master plan.
That was, yeah, master plan.
And is it, is there a possibility that the phases could be broken up? Or do they all need to be taken as one with the termination ability or?
I, I don't know that we've talked about that possibility.
There's, there's some natural breakpoints in, in that contract and that's how the, so the, that's, it's been broke. The proposal's been broken up into three phases where there's a natural point where you would pause, look at what the work had been done, make an assessment and determine if you want to continue with the contract or not. And then align it with funding.
I think what Commissioner Basavida and I had spoken about was, it's like, we don't, we still don't exactly know what we're building. And so having a better sense of like, if it's going to be a restaurant space or an office space or a, and then how does that, how do the economics of that flow? That would help have context for the greater project.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think the one thing I haven't researched is if we were to carve that off as a separate contract. And, and it turned out, everybody thought, okay, great, we're going to do, we think it's a good idea. We then have to go out for a brand new RFP for the remainder.
So having the termination point might make it easier from like a process perspective. Just making sure that the commission has the mechanism to.
To terminate if, if the commission thinks it's, and it's only a few hundred thousand dollars, when I understand that initial phase.
And is there any direction from the commission that we have, like that's mutual as we go into this? So for example, for me, I know that I support the waterfront center to host our offices. And a multi, like as presented, a multipurpose space that, that provides broad public access to nonprofits, community groups and educational institutions. If it turns out that like some commercial space really helps the whole thing pencil out or helps drive foot traffic, that's great as well. But that first piece, like, I don't know if you've ever gotten sort of shared commission direction about the core purposes of the waterfront center that could then be embodied into this.
And that, I think is what would be fed into that first phase where they would be assessing what it is that the building would be, we anticipate the building would use for.
Because I think to intelligently have that conversation, we need market information that says, here's how much rent is going to be paid for X, here's what the tenant improvements are going to cost, here's the viability of, there's three office tenants. It's not very likely you're going to get another office tenant. Here, there's 400 retail, you know what I mean? Like we need feasibility from market experts before we can.
Kind of, but you need feasibility for what, right? Like for, for what purpose or function? There's a chicken in the egg and it is it or, and I assume that's anticipated.
Yeah, well, I think having it written concurrently with our waterfront center planning puts us at low risk to not be able to use against our waterfront center, our, our master planning. I mean, concurrently, you will have a better picture of what was thought and what the rest of the.
Director Smith and I were at a conference together where we saw a picture of the multipurpose commission room that some, was it Port Townsend? It was, it was a smaller port. Where even the commission room doesn't just sit there as a commission room, the rest of the week gets used for other purposes. And as we look to consolidate into one place, I think the, for example, the objective of having the commission room built in a different, more publicly accessible, different kind of whole tone and tenor to the community, I would put that forward, but I'd love to see that validated, right? Like, I think there's maybe a set of five things we could early on validate that if we could bake in would be helpful.
That phase one planning includes that marketing analysis and exactly what you described, Mr. Commissioner Basavida.
And we will have, by the time this comes up for action, have gone to Port Flama for our budget retreat. And there's some excellent examples of spaces, nonprofits, spaces.
Can we go to a different item or are we still on the waterfront center?
So then the option to ground lease for amendment, fifth amendment for Panatoni would come for action on August 12th. And then action other is surplus equipment approval. I do not know what equipment.
Saying that is getting authorization to surplus the crane.
Oh, crane. Everyone's going to want to know if it is. Let's make sure we put that one in. May I go back to another item that was action Bud Inlet Remediation and Integrated Master Plan Contract? I learned, I understood what you said, Director, last week about why, or because so many people have already been assembled.
Yeah.
And for efficiency sake, kind of moving forward with all of that under the existing umbrella. I have some concerns about the level of investment in this project until we do start to sync up with the City of Olympia on the planned action approach. So I just wanted to use the fact that this is on July 22nd to kind of elevate to the commission that that City of Olympia joint meeting, and whether it's City of Olympia or their planning commission, I don't know, I leave to you all to advise. But some level of connecting on this before we, before we sign a commitment to a certain direction and how we're going to scope out all those ready documents would be of value.
Now, appreciate that very much, Commissioner. And I was going to suggest that the City of Olympia joint meeting be our first joint meeting. Just for that very reason, there's a lot of coordination we need to do with them when it comes to master planning. And also if we want to use tax increment financing, we also need to be in partnership or at least having some good communication with City of Olympia on that. So.
And how realistic is it to you that that could be done in the next, you know, if this is, you're trying to move forward on a contract July 22nd? Well, how, how do you, how do you foresee that that City of Olympia meeting?
I think we should try to schedule it as soon as joint schedules allow. But I will say that on the master planning conversations with the team to date on scoping and sort of initial plan, that one of the first interactions they're recommending as well is that we connect with LA and the City of Olympia and start talking about interlocal agreements that will spell out and sort of cement our partnerships on this moving forward. So that's contemplated as one of the first steps.
So the intent of entering the master planning is that we will then start working on the City of Olympia. So one doesn't, it doesn't need to precede the approval of the contract. The contract will then be get having the conversation.
Yeah, yeah, I think that it, yeah, that it's part, already part of the plan is to have those conversations and prioritize those. And the whole way through, the master plan will be designed to meet the planned action EIS requirements of the city. So that's going to be part of our first conversation as well. That's what we're shooting for and need to do.
And one more thing before you keep going, the budget retreat. I have outstanding, something I'm concerned about, which is the HCP mitigation land, which is going to be so important. Having sort of clarity then on how we're going to budget for the airport since that the revenues there can have to stay at the airport if we make this investment from the general fund. How it will be paid back and also how airport properties will then sort of pay back the, yeah, like will it be spread across all tenants, across all the airport lands?
Yeah.
The, the cost of the mitigation.
So what we're proposing to do with the budget retreat is, is have some of those background informational discussions, questions answered, help from things like how airport finances work, what properties are subject to this sort of revenue requirement that the revenue generated from the go back to the airport. And then what that, that looks like. And then have a, there are several topics like that, like.
Those conversations, what we haven't done is whether our accounting is following that and I think it's not. So it'll have to be built in.
So two things, one is sort of how do we track our finances better? And then thing two is how do we develop our budget for next year? So this was going to be focused on thing two, how we develop our budget for next year. But one of the things we wanted to look in at that is what new investments do, as the commission want us to make? So above and beyond sort of what we've already thought about, contemplated, budgeted for. What new investments does the commission want to make? And then staff are going to come or the business units are going to come prepared to talk about the investments they'd like the CS make. And then based on the conversation around those, we would go back and prepare a draft budget that reflects that conversation.
I see, because the HCP budget amendment is not coming before us in this.
Not in this timeframe and I, and it may, I don't think it would because the city is the one that is hoping to actually be the title holder of the property. They are doing an appraisal and they don't think it'll be done until September. That's their estimate.
Great. I think we're on September 9th, which is a regular meeting and you can see it's not built out fully, but there's one advisory for the Dischutes Estuary ILA. And then a monthly POCCAC memo.
And the Department of Enterprise Services will be coming to do that update along with their contractors for the Dischutes Estuary Interlocal Agreement. I think it's just about finalized and the approval from the governing bodies of all the entities that are signing on in September. So, the advisory then and the next meeting will be an action. It's not on there yet, but it will be.
And because we have only one meeting in August, your next work session is not until September 16th, where you'll be discussing the 2025 legislative agenda and having another agenda setting meeting.
No meeting on, oh wait, sorry, not yet.
Sorry. Get my calendar.
It's your summer decree.
And the limited programming we have for September 23rd is Puget Sound Clean Energy Audit and Transition Plan. And this stemmed from, I think, a conversation one of the commissioners had asked for, for us to take a look at clean energy as it might relate to the airport.
I'd love to include anything they have on battery storage over time, too. That was one thing I have in my notes here. I know PSE is looking into battery storage for emergencies and we have a lot of land to potentially store these batteries and generate revenue for the port while also having emergency services available via energy storage. This is something I know Bob was interested in or Commissioner Iyal was interested in.
Me too.
Okay, so that's what we have planned out. Obviously, September and October will flush out as more items come up. So on the list of things where we're looking to get your feedback today in terms of sort of priority, prioritizing and scheduling cadence. With hoping on this category of timing more discretionary, it looks like on Bud Inlet Cleanup Updates, they'll be and we'll be sure to check in with you during the setting meeting if there are particular aspects of the cleanup you would like an update on. With the master planning, is there a cadence you would like from us on updates?
Have a recommendation based on the work so far?
You know, I think we could initially do monthly and then maybe, because I think it's going to be action packed as opposed to the monthly cleanup. So why don't we propose to do monthly? At least to start.
And do commissioners here feel like Alex and staff can look at times outside our regular schedule to coordinate this council meeting? Olympia? What are we trying to do? Invite them to, to one of our meetings or?
We could go to one of theirs. Whatever.
And this, I might be in the minority on this, but sometimes joint meetings put a lot of pressure where there isn't a lot of rapport and trust. And so one of the things that we talked about before was having joint get togethers to start off with the relationship building. Like we did the tour with Tumwater of our properties that are a little bit more casual and people aren't on the spot quite so much. That might not be possible with City of Olympia because we actually need them to like, answer a question. Like if we do, I don't know in your guys' mind, but I personally would lean towards more casual relationship building with all of those people unless there's some business reason that we need to have a formal meeting. Because there has just been historical, meetings have been misinterpreted or like, we don't have the relationship and we go in and we're like, what do you think about this? And we put people on the spot. So I just would throw that out there. Do you guys have an opinion?
I, I, I just think it's difficult to, whether it's our meeting or their meeting, it's, it's difficult to fit that type of conversation into a, an official meeting agenda. I think it's much better to be outside of that and a little more casual.
And obviously the public's still invited. It's very, but it's more so just that it doesn't put everyone in this.
Yeah, so one thing we did.
Yeah, or I.
Like with the Olympia Downtown Association, we used to actually have a dinner in like the Arcato's private room. Because the way the room was configured, there was an opportunity to kind of talk about, somebody get up and sort of talk about whatever was a priority. But it, it really facilitated some conversation and socializing as well. So we could do something similar, either a lunch or a dinner.
Just as we continue to build our relationship with our neighboring jurisdictions, this is a new day at the port. This is just we're, relationship building being equally, if not more important than work. So however you got, you all want to navigate that, but that would be the only thing I would throw in there. And to answer your question, Commissioner Basavida, I think it probably makes the most sense for it not to be during one of our meeting times. Just because like Commissioner Iyal said, it doesn't really fit very well. Yeah.
Intent of the actual scheduled meeting is just.
And I know we're not the easiest cats to herd, but they do have seven. So like, maybe we can try and go to them or something, you know?
It's going to be hard.
Well, apparently though, they were, when I had my very first meeting with Jay Bernie, he said there, his commission was gung ho to meet with you.
Good.
So let's, let me talk to Jay and maybe we can set Missy and her counterpart to looking for opportunities for either like a lunch or a dinner as a social thing. We still have opportunities to present things in that, but and know that before then and in the background, the master planning team will be city folks to kind of let them know what we're trying to do, understand where their goals are in downtown. All get on the same page.
Because Commissioner Basavida, what is in your mind the, what is, what is it that we need from them as far as direction? Because Commissioner Vasavada, what is in your mind the, what is, what is it that we need from them as far as direction at? At the beginning of the master planning process, what's the critical? Feedback.
I think that it's really important that they be briefed and invited in from the beginning because that. Because of my work with electives tells me that, um, we want to make sure that they feel part of this vision that that could transform our downtown. And open up our waterfront forever. And it's an incredible opportunity, but if folks aren't in from the beginning, they might reflexively not.
Right.
Be very supportive of it.
So it's not that you think that we need a specific answer on like, do you want a yellow building? It's more so just having them be engaged from the very beginning.
I think so. You're very concerned about relationship building is why I want to have both formal and informal engagement upfront.
Yeah.
And some people will walk through different doors.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
One possibility I could see Alex is that if they're, the planning group under the contract is going to start engaging them. You could invite different commissioners to, there'll be multiple engagement meetings and. And yours could just join.
Yeah.
Because I would like to not lose the thread of what it is we're actually doing, but I need to be accountable to my community about, especially on the waterfront. Development.
Start at the beginning, including all of these stakeholders and maintaining the relationships to begin with. And we won't miss that feedback because we don't know what we don't know and we don't know what feedback we're looking for, but we might get that golden nugget just by continuing to build relationships.
And one thing we've been talking about is having a steering committee for the master planning from various jurisdictions. And we could include elected officials from the board, from the other jurisdictions as well.
And I mean, just elevating that traditionally squawks, this would be seen as historical lands. And not that all of these jurisdictions aren't important, but given the history of not necessarily including our tribal partners from the beginning. I think that it would be really important.
Okay.
As well. Um, and I think we really made an effort to do that with the Bud Inlet remediation. And then we have built, we have been building our relationship, which is good, um, but continuing to do that on this so that it's not late. And, and that's just the challenge of like where we're at organizationally with everyone, you know, being turnover and being new. So we're playing catch up a little bit, but I agree with Commissioner Vasavada, the more that we can, even if it's just an email saying, we really want you to be a part of this from the beginning. If it, even if it takes six months to get on, at least they knew that.
Yeah.
This is what we intend with all of our, all of these people really, you know?
So it sounds like of these joint meetings priorities are City of Olympia, Squaxen. And then maybe City of Tom Water.
Tom Water is critical for a, a lot of our work. I, I think, and I think that there's relationship building that we can work on there.
Okay.
Given historical.
Yeah.
We have Lacey in September, so again, we don't know, we don't know and kind of hear.
Okay. May I add on Squaxen, I, I wanted to raise up the issue of the K G Y building. And, um, I think you've given us some director updates, but at some point I think you do need to engage the community. A little bit in a conversation about that. And for me, I'm, I'm bringing this up in the context of Squaxen because I am curious if, if whether it can be done through staff or in a different way. Of whether they have any particular vision, um, for that unique facility.
Yeah, and I think what we want to do first before any, any further is get that engineering, structural engineering assessment in the building and the peers. Just to see, are they usable? Yeah, according to our staff who's just done a little visual, if there's questions in their minds.
And what's the timeline? Could you remind me?
I don't know. We've asked James to get going on that. Do you know?
We've reached out to Moffett Nickel and there, we're in their scheduling queue. So, um. We can, yeah, we can ask them again tomorrow and yeah, ask James for an update.
I would agree though, based on historical context, Squaxen should be. And we did have some conversations with Squaxens about that building in particular.
Okay.
And I don't want to speak for anyone anecdotally. I don't think there was like strong, like we're going to do this, but we should revisit it. But we did have the conversation some, uh, some.
Yeah.
Um, it doesn't mean we shouldn't have it again when there's actually something on the table, but.
Yeah.
It wasn't like they were like, we have this, we totally want to do this thing right now.
Okay. Um, and then we talked about field trips up to Bellingham Everett Vancouver, uh, or Vancouver to look at, um. Similar waterfront developments. I think some of that is built into the schedule that, uh, consultants have given us on the master. So I, I think they were looking to do sort of a trifecta north, go Bellingham, Britt, like Anacortes maybe. So, um, it gets already built in.
Can you let us know dates though?
Yeah, I don't think we've nailed down the dates. I think there were some potential, is that even on the timeline?
I think they're waiting for the contract, uh, for that work to be approved before they started codifying dates.
Makes sense.
And we've got a workshop with them on July thirtieth if the contract is approved. And, um, my goal would be to sort of nail down timelines, uh, to the extent we can. On those types of things like publishing. Okay, well, thank you for all of that. Question about trying to keep on Commissioner Vasavada's timeline. So Chehalis, the Chehalis tribe. Um, I think we've reached out to them occasionally. I don't think they've been super responsive. We don't have a ton of engagement with them, but they are within Princeton County and just wanted to check and see if you would be interested in doing a relationship building. Something with them?
Definitely. Well, definitely.
Okay.
Um, the chairman, uh, he's the chair of Steady.
Oh.
And, um, and I know the chairman.
Okay.
Great, we'll do some relationship. No, the, the chairman of Steady, um, works for Talking CJ as their general manager. And he's a Chehalis tribal member and he also attends the Grand Mound Rochester Chamber. And they have some development plans in Tom Water that are not a secret, but, um, that I think would be something we would definitely want to talk about. Um, Experience Olympia and Beyond has engaged them in the Destination Master Plan work and they, they had some turnover on their council. And so they have a new contact now, so maybe, um, and that could help with the relationship building there. Um, cause there was a moment where it, what nobody was, you know, sure who the right person was. Um, and I think there was some progress made on who the right person was, but yeah.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Cool, awesome.
And I'd love to like learn about what they're doing in Grand Mound and, um, they are sort of quietly doing a lot of interesting things. So it would be fun to learn about, um, what they're doing.
Yeah.
It could be if it's, if they're not ready for a government to government type meeting, I mean, even having their economic development.
Yeah.
Director or some enterprise director.
Yeah.
I mean, speak to us would be.
Okay.
Awesome. I wasn't able to attend, but the Lucky Eagle Casino reached out to me as a commissioner to attend their employee appreciation luncheon at the Great Lodge.
Nice.
But it was in conjunction with the, the commission commit, men, so I wasn't able to attend.
That's cool. Yeah, that's awesome. Hey. Um, and one thing I skipped, sorry, I'm going to jump around a little bit. Um, Mark Daly was interested in coming, uh, to a commission meeting and giving an update on what's going on at TRPC.
I think that should be not backburnered because the money is night and timely and. I mean, if everything's. But I think us knowing, especially at the last TRPC meeting, they were refining. What some of our asks should be tailored around as far as dollars. I think educating us about that would be, does everyone, anyone else feel differently or agree?
No, I would like the details on that.
Just because it's like these monies are, the infrastructure dollars are going to be gone in three years.
Yeah. Would September ninth be?
That'd be great.
Is that sound good to all commissioners?
I'd not, thank you, Commissioner.
All right, so we will put in Mark Daly if he can come, if he can't come, we'll someone else. PRPC. Okay. Uh, and then I guess last but not least, uh, wondered, are there other priorities? Things you'd like to see on a work session or other priorities you're interested in, in us, um, looking at or investigating?
Well, I, I'd like you to advise us in this context on how to move this forward, but the Pocac. Um, when Commissioner Harding, you weren't able to attend that one time, um, they came in and did an update on sort of some small victories that they saw. That involved making pedestrian and other improvements around North Point, sort of the arena where we have performances and, and along the pathway. The most salient of which one has moved toward, which is the Niskwali, uh, Frank, Squali Junior.
Billy Frank Junior.
Frank Junior. Signs, thank you for translating for me. They seem to be asking, can we approve a contract for some capital dollars or, or planning, planning dollars around that area? Do you remember? Can you? Can you kindly provide Commissioner Harding a better update of what that was?
I think, um, uh, and Camille can fill in everything I missed, but I think it was really just sort of updating the walking trail and the amenities along the trail on the port peninsula to just kind of. Get us ready for even more improvements, but just to make it an even more attractive, um, place for tourists.
Uh, they, they had a, a, a number of improvements that they recommended. One was, uh, small improvements that would get, gain easy community access like make it ADA accessible to the park. Um, you know, evaluate any kind of landscaping improvements there that would make the area, uh, family friendly and attractive. Leading up to further development after the master plan and happens in the coming years. And their recommenda- their recommendation, they, they worked close closely with me on, well, how do we accomplish that? What would be the best recommendation? So we worked together in terms of determining, okay. We could, we could do and have an estimate of, you know, costs developed so that in twenty twenty five, a budget, a, a budget, uh, request could come before you. And you could evaluate, this would be the cost to do these kinds of capital improvements that would carry that area forward as the rest of the peninsula. Um, is developed over the coming years. Um, there's hundreds of people who, uh, who go to North Point, to Billy Frank Junior Park. And well, gosh, like you just saw at all the concerts and you saw at the concerts too. There's all of these folks in there. Is there anything that we could do to make it more, um, accessible to people? And so their, so their recommendation was, you know, uh, have, have staff, uh, get cost estimates together to give a pro proposal for you. For twenty twenty five, uh, potential improvements in your capital investment plan.
Thank you, Camille. And so I just wanted to pick up that thread because they, they went, they've been working on this a long time. I'm not saying it embodies every member of the Pocac, but members of the Destination Waterfront Recommendations Group. This is what they came forward with. And I wonder, there's no staffer who's assigned to capital improvements that aren't within. The business lines, so Alex, is this something you see yourself moving forward? Or is there something further we should convene as, as a commission to continue that conversation?
Well, that's definitely something, uh, you know, I was sort of envisioning could be part of our conversation about investments you all would like to see included in the budget. And so, um, and James Summers is really the guy who does it for everybody, including for public spaces and, uh, that are unrelated to business lines. So, um, we could have James take a look at costing out the recommendations from the Pocac and definitely, uh, just raise it again at that budget. Meeting, a retreat with you all, and if it's a consensus from the commission, you want to, that in, we can.
And, and I guess I would say this is a good example of using the agenda setting meeting. So I would support mission direction for that to be an item that we program out in our agendas. And do we have consensus from the whole group that that is the direction, the staff, the direction we would like to give staff? Does everyone agree that they would like to see a proposal as to what these capital improvements would look like?
So Commissioner Tong is saying yes for North Point, I guess I, I agree for that, for that area.
For just North Point, not necessarily the trail.
Oh, well, yes, yeah, the trail is part of it. The peninsula, could we say for the peninsula or no?
Or is it specifically to the Pocac recommendations?
Yeah, I think so.
To the Poc. Okay.
That's, I think, sort of the.
Right, the point. Being responsive work and.
Right.
What do you think, Commissioner Sanders?
I would say that that would be a good, um, direction to go with if the full commission's.
My, my request would be that James would present us in the budget retreat, some kind of proposal concept.
Oh, it's okay. No, no need to apologize. I, I guess, I, I would just like to understand how it relates to or, or, or how is different from the master planning that we're contracting through the DOF contract? I, I just would like to understand how that, how that all works together or.
Yeah, in my mind, and this is an item I'm going to bring up next. It's like we have this huge master planning process happening that's going to take a lot of time. And if we could pick off some small things that we could do now, that would help have a sense of accomplishment as we're working on the bigger goal. And so it's being responsive to the Pocac and the work that they've done. And it's also providing a measurable win while we're working on this massive effort that it's fatiguing to work on these massive projects. So if we don't have some wins along the way, I, so that's why for me, why it's different.
But Commissioner IL to possibly your point, making investments when you're planning for what the highest investment would be are kind. It, it seems a little incongruous. We heard an example from Bellingham at one of the commissioner, uh, or at a training where they talked about the pump track that they've brought. There's this bicycle track that isn't part of the long-term plan for, for how the land will be developed. But on the time scale, it, it's there, it's actually bringing more people down. It builds more engagement with the waterfront, even though it has nothing to do with what ten years down the road to be there. So I think that would be the, the kinds of wins we're looking for are improvements that sort of make sense even over a five to 10 year time scale. Um, so even if they're not part of the long-term.
Right.
Development of parts of the.
Well, and that, that makes sense, but I, I think my point is I, I would just like to understand how, how is it going to complement then the larger project?
And staff can talk about that.
Yeah, and all, yeah, and I think we'll evaluate it, um, it was like a concept and cleanup that if you do an early part of the cleanup, whatever you do, just can't preclude. The final remedy from being implemented. And so this would be sort of, we, whatever we do can't preclude, um, whatever comes out of the master plan.
That's going to be my new bumper sticker, no preclusion of remedies.
Say that five times.
It'll fund the master plan.
Um, and I want to follow up with that, like I had this sort of realization of kind of the same thing, even though I wasn't at the Pocac meeting. That Bud Inlet and development in Tom Water and development of the waterfront are these really massive projects. And our community has these little needs along the way. Maggie's at a steady meeting or sorry, Commissioner Sanders is at a steady meeting, Commissioner Tong's at a Lacey Chamber meeting. Um, we need to make sure it's not a gift of public funds. We need to make sure that it, but I think having some sort of, and, and I hashed out a little structure that I can. If, if the commission would like to discuss it, um, I can share or work with staff or just pass it off to staff, whatever is most appropriate. But some way of creating, uh, uh, we had a little pot of money that we set aside in our budget last year for the commission. Um, and I think using that so that each of the commissioners could take a turn being responsive to a need that they saw in their community is something to consider. And I would entertain feedback from the commission as whether that's something you would like to further discuss or not. Because again, uh, this is a good example of like, maybe nobody else wants to talk about it, totally fine. If you do, then we can pass it off to be programmed. I think that is a really amazing idea, uh, because when I approached Alex, um, when she very first came on board, Sweet Hall came to me. To purchase flags and without, you know, our small cities grants, it wasn't something that the port could provide funds for. And, um, I'm, I'm not sure if they have new flags, um, for the Sweet Hall, but that totally would have, you know, paid for a small. Cause, you know, in, in the South Borough County. And, you know, we, at, at our last steady meeting, it was, we reached out and gave checks. Um, it was at a senior center program, you know, they could have have unmet needs. And so these smaller set aside funds could go towards different causes in our communities, so I would.
I am supportive of a director's fund. That is this amount of money that was set aside where any commissioner knows we can go and advise the director that we have identified through the community. Um, a possible use for this director's fund consistent with our port RCWs and get some public funds. Where it's really, um, directed by Director Smith because what I'm worried about having staffed local government and. Where it's really um directed by Director Smith because what I'm worried about having staffed local government and government sort of. Statutes is it's kind of strange for a single commissioner to be directing something formally. As you're always saying, one voice like through our acts. And so instead of it being by resolution, it's not strange for a director to have ability to make certain small purchases. Um, and for us to rely then on sort of the relationship we have with Alex to to bring that forward. It takes away some of the limelight, like, oh, Jasmine Vesavida wanted to be the one to. But I think that also takes away some of the legal and ethical concerns I have. With the original concept, which is that I don't think an individual commissioner can confer a benefit like that. And it's it's technical, but. It it runs afoul of how I think of government ethics. Uh, and so maybe it it can be open to a different sort of way of organizing it where um. It still could exist and be there for us to make small wins. That would be my recommendation.
I'm open to your recommendation. Um, I think that puts you in a difficult spot to pick and choose from what different commissioners are. Suggesting and I'm trying to avoid you and the rest of the staff being put in the spot of choosing. Um. But. I'm open to however it best functions, certainly not about limelight. I think it's about meeting the needs of our community, so however we can best do that.
Well, and I don't think that. I don't think that it would ever. At least in my understanding, even though we had this budget set aside, I've called it the commissioner's. Uh, budget, it wouldn't be just one commissioner directing payment on that. We would still have to all agree on the. Vantage.
Right, right.
So whether you call it the executive director or the commissioner.
Right.
It it's still, it's. Still go through the same process.
We would just be supporting each.
Right, right. Yeah, my thought would be to develop some criteria so that we avoid the the sort gift of public funds and I've worked with. Out front counsel to make sure we we did that. And then, yeah, I could be sort of um a repository for suggestions from the commission. And then um bring it to the commission for final approval, so that there is a blessing of all.
And again. Again, staff might, we we may direct staff to private private present a proposal and program it into our schedule and they may present it and we may say no. So it's programming it into the agendas doesn't mean we have to agree. It's it's whether or not we want to direct staff to even consider it. So um two steps. So.
And I would rather not see staff and commission time for these small like. Purchase of flags, like it doesn't feel like. Commensurate. With our time and attention on things, but perhaps it is. If your instinct is. It's sort of a trust building exercise where we keep demonstrating our connection to.
Yeah, and that's just a philosophical, we all may feel differently about whether it's helpful or not.
And I could, if there are, you know, if there's one or two from each commissioner, we could bundle them together to bring them to the commission. I mean, I I think part of what. Um, the benefit of bringing to a commission meeting is that then it makes a public more aware of the fact that we're we're trying to meet these small needs throughout.
And it could be in your executive director report. Little win of the week is that we bought a new flag, the end.
Yeah.
Like, it could literally take one minute.
Okay.
Like, or ten seconds. So um, little win of the week, but like my idea is from a like. Communications perspective that the the that this is like celebrating, like you don't. We have to figure out how to communicate the great work that we're doing and communicating that we're doing a two hundred million dollar cleanup project. Is like, kind of like, what are we, you know, like, whereas it's like, we bought a flag, like, and we have to do both.
Yeah.
Like, I don't know. I I think human beings need long term and short term.
So I will go and work on this and then I'll bring back a a proposed plan to you.
And I would just like to say this is not more urgent than the City of Olympia meeting, so if it doesn't fit into the programming, that's completely reasonable. At your discretion.
Okey doke.
Does anyone else have any other?
Uh, one thing I wanted to add for down the line is I really like this economic value analysis that we have on the website. I'd like for us to be one to twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Mr. Tong, I haven't seen the, I I don't know which specific one you're talking about, but. Um, part of that that I have been hoping for is an understanding of our tenants, both the marina and. In our real estate properties, I think these are not usually, they're not multimillionaires, they're small businesses where many things happen. And the more we could um have transparency about that, the better, especially as we're going to be asked to make further investments.
So one thing we've been starting to do on um our website or social media is uh. Putting a spotlight on tenants and so we could also do that in. Uh, commission meeting and the executive director report just happens a regular thing, uh tenant spotlight and. Just sort of share, move beyond. The obvious, the Anthony's of the world.
And that's the sort of communication marketing side, but I was building on Commissioner Tong's um statement about an economic. Evaluation study and so I was hoping more holistic information about like.
Okay, in advance of that.
About, no, not in advance, it's just a different ask, which is that. So for example, Swantown Marina, it, there's been disinvestment. And I anticipate we're going to be asked to make significant investments in the arena, if not this year in the near future. And there's a story out there. That it's millionaires in the Swantown.
Ah, I see.
But in fact, my instinct is that the average income of people using Swantown Marina is not dissimilar than the average income in our communities. And on top of that, we've got the boat working businesses and things like that. So the more we could. I have seen critiques of some of our and but economic valuation studies about the core critiques that were including so much indirect. We're including Merrill Lynch jobs that just happened to be Merrill Lynch would have that job in our community, whether or not they were a tenant of a building that we had, right? There's some but for causation stuff when you're dealing with tenants. That said. If we could kind of have a more, a survey of of what we've got going on, I I think it would just help. Communicate better and and more honestly, and so at some point.
Yeah.
If we had capacity to put that information together as part of an economic valuation study. Which it may be part of what you were referring to, I just.
So we've done the economic impact. Analysis, is that what economic value is what this document? Okay. But that's the economic, but or this is economic benefits, but it does. Okay, at all the various level, then it goes through Swantown Marina, various jobs supported, but.
And this one I.
We want to be very direct.
I've heard some significant.
How many critiques? Understood.
Critiques of this particular study, but I do think there is something valid valid to do.
Yeah. Okay, so as we get ready, I think we do those rig and oh.
Well, then the master plan, uh, those economic valuations and impact studies are going to be included and those are the first two products that will be worked on in. Master planning in terms of deliverables will include an economic analysis of. The marine terminal and the marina, but it does not, and to acknowledge it does not include the airport. And the other properties, but it does include those two business lines, so you'll have some early information now.
Well, then if you can let us be a little bit prescriptive or directive about that information so that it it hits the. Mark, like find a way that we do that without.
Yeah.
One person directing that, like, that would be very valuable to me and possibly getting.
Ensure that before those analyses are done, we'll give you what sort of what the methodology is gonna look like. No?
Okay.
Yes, no?
If it's already a done deal, there's no. So it depends what you mean. If you brief us on what is gonna happen, it's already happening.
For what?
If you mean brief us on a methodology that's already been set, then there's no opportunity to influence the methodology.
Well, no. But. If not, was to brief you on the methodology, so that if you input on the methodology before it's implemented.
So are you, are you thinking like? I don't think Merrill Lynch should be in included in that. Change the way it's being constructed, so it doesn't include tenants that are but for like what?
Commissioner Harding, I I understand and have myself written those sorts of indirect. Evalu evaluation reports and there's nothing wrong with having that. And that job number and the way that's calculated. I just think that there are other data indices that would be helpful, at least to me. In my eh as persuasive. For example, a survey of the the tenants of Swantown Marina. And what their income is, like, is it possible to get that information?
Right.
Um, would be one example. That doesn't show up in our current economic benefits of the Port of Olympia report. A list of of tenants who are small businesses, how many small businesses we're supporting. Versus, so it's not excluding Merrill Lynch, but a small business has a different definition than a. That that sort of data.
Yeah. And so that could be, um, I'm just to get, I think there are standard rates that some of these things are done and to be comparative from year to year, we may wanna. Have aspects of it mirror what was done before, but it doesn't mean we also can't do something in addition that looks at. Um, sort of the socioeconomic. Status of our marine tenants and the um. To highlight on the number of small businesses.
Well, and what you're saying is is that there are. More data would be helpful in telling the story.
Right.
And you want to have input on what that data, or not you, the commission should have input on what the data that will help tell the story is because they're the ones with the lens to the community.
And because a lot of these studies, they're just redone year after year, the same exact study.
Right.
And they're not helping tell the story.
Right. Yeah, understood, okay. Okay, so thank you for that, Commissioner Tong. She started us down that rabbit hole. Others. Priorities, things you want us to be working on. And we revisit this in future uh agenda setting meetings.
I think the uh tenant spotlights on social media are really effective, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Right, is there anything else?
Well, not according to Commissioner Pesavida, apparently.
No.
Holding?
Well, once. Question, when do we bring an update on negotiations back?
I'd be happy to let you know, we think we have um. Finished negotiations with forty seven A. Um, so they had, uh, we had, I think, maybe a total of four different issues that we worked through in a relative timeframe, um, and so. Uh, that one we think is done, we just need to put it in paper uh in writing and. Uh, with forty seven B, we have a meeting with them next week. We um had some movement towards each other and I think. Um, they are going to give us a proposal early. I think at some point this week and then we meet next week, uh, have another. Conversation. Still trying, still trying to chip away at it.
Nowhere in our three, we don't build in like a taking.
Is it, yeah, I guess to that point, is it worth um including that in an executive tourist report or? Some way of messaging back to the community that it, that there is work being done. Obviously, there's a lot of confidentiality, but that maybe that would be helpful. But it is. Uh, within the bounds of your.
Yeah. Okay.
I think getting the one on one.
Exclusive, member only. Uh, okay.
Okay.
All right, I'm not hearing any uh any other. Comments or questions, so uh this meeting is adjourned.